Dave, can you hear us now? Dave Johnson?
Yes, I hear you now. Thank you.
Bill Dakota.
Here.
Tim Banky. Anthony Milli. Virginia Ramos Rios.
Here.
Sam Sharba. John Slazarsky.
Present.
And Ajay.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, minutes from last meeting. Any, any notes, any edits?
What are you looking at me?
When was the last meeting?
A few months back, yeah. All right, well then, entertainment, a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, all right, minutes are approved. All right, and then on to public participation. Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom? I don't, it doesn't look like it. All right, we will move on. No public participation. We'll go on to new business, and then we have a few presentations tonight. So first up, I believe, is Locked In, who is going to give us a briefing here. So the floor is yours.
Do you guys want any? Are you gonna use screen?
I have it mine.
I'll take a.
I'll take one.
I'll take one.
Actually, this is just the Locked In part, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got that. I'm good.
You got that one.
I'll take it.
Yep.
Janet, do you mind if I take over sharing the screen, or do you want to share the presentation on your computer?
I could not give.
She wants to know, she wants to, you want her to.
I'm gonna, yep.
All right. So thank you everyone for joining us today. We're going to be reviewing your experience for your year end 2024, 2025 policy year, and then where you stand today, year-to-date with our data through July of 2025. So digging into that experience detail, the first thing we'll look at is just some policy or trends. This top half of the graph shows your per employee per month claims by policy or quarter. So this is showing two complete years of policy or eight quarters of data, plus July of 2025, which is the first month of your current policy period. Layered on top of that is a 12-month average. So as you can see, looking at the 12-month average, your claims have been relatively consistent over the past few quarters. As we creep into July 2025, we are getting slightly higher, breaching that 2,000 mark. But overall, in the past five quarters, your claims have stayed relatively consistent, which is great news. This is overall town and Board of Education combined. When we look at that July 2025 column here, you can see that it is pretty favorable, that is following your previous trends of having more favorable first quarters and second quarters of the plan year. As we work towards those later quarters and as those later months come in, we expect the claims to become slightly less favorable. We can see that trend following in this bottom-hand graph, the per employee per month cost versus accrual, looking at a little bit more granular detail with that monthly data. This is a 13-month policy that we're looking at. So starting in July 2024, where again, our experience was favorable, and as we work through the policy, we can see those claims start to tick up. When we look at your current month, we are below accrual, so the green line being your accrual, the blue line being your total cost. And then if you look at the layered line behind that, that is your actual plan trend. So the data, the dotted line, we can see is increasing as even as we move through July with that favorable first month. Any questions here before we move on to a little bit more detail on this data?
No.
Okay, perfect.
Just, just one quick one. What is, what are claims trending at? Like, what is it, like 10%, 8%?
I can get that number for you.
This one.
When we get to the next.
Yes.
Uh, I can calculate it quickly on my, on my calculator, but off the top of my head, I don't know that exact percentage. We can calculate that one in a slider too. Dave, I don't know if you want to get ahead of me and start calculating that.
Yep.
Perfect. So again, this is your detail on the policy or experience for your previous completed policy year, so July 2024 through June 2025. We have this broken down into three specific buckets, so the town, the Board of Education, and the total group combined. If you look at that total group, you can see we were in a deficit position of about $870,000, largely driven by your town population. The town population contributes only about 27.5% of the population, so those claims and that deficit, you know, was largely driven by large claimants that hit the plan this year. We look at that gross loss ratio, you're running at the claims and fixed costs are running at 127.6% of your budgeted rates. And then once you break out your claims over that stop-loss level, that net loss ratio was 124.3%. In that policy period, your RX claims represented about 34.2% of your total cost. That is slightly higher than our benchmark. We expect that to be around 25%, but that is consistent with the population for what we have seen for you guys historically. With that net loss ratio, we spoke about some claims being taken out over the ISL. You had one claimant that hit your $175,000 stop-loss level this year. The reimbursements associated that were about $117,000. Beneath that 175, you had six additional members, so seven total claimants that we were tracking with claims above 100K. Those claimants have generated $1.1 million in claims, which represents 27.4% of your gross cost. So again, that loss ratio, that gross loss ratio was largely driven by the members that were large claimants but did not get hit the stop-loss level, where you were able to receive protection for that catastrophic claim. The Board of Education also finished in a slight deficit, but if we look at that net loss ratio is 100.1%, our target being 100%, so you know, this is a great position to end the year in. The Board of Education accounts for a lot larger population, so 72.5% of the total population is tracked to that Board of Education group. Large claims again represent 30, about 31.6%, so slightly above that benchmark level, but again, consistent with your history. And then we have three large claimants from the Board of Education that hit that 175 ISL, generating about $271,000 in reimbursements. There were 13 total members with claims above $100,000, contributing $2.1 million in claims. Since this is a much larger population, and they generally generate a lot larger claim dollars, this only represents 19.4% of the gross claim cost. So again, we can see how that catastrophic high claim year is really affecting the town. Those claimants are contributing a lot higher percentage than the Board of Education group. Overall, the total group net loss ratio was 105.7%. And then if we combine the total large claim experience there, we had four large claimers that hit that stop-loss level, 20 total members with claims above 100K, generating 3, $3.2 million, and they represent 21.6% of that total gross claim cost for the entire group. Overall, the town was responsible for 34.8% of that high claimant cost, while the Board of Education was responsible for 65.2% of the total large claimant cost. Just spoke a lot about this experience detail. I'll pause right now to see if you guys have any questions about this. And let me know.
Your per head trend is somewhere between 3 and 5%, depending on what period we look at, which is about at least half of what the market trend is.
Yeah, that would, sounds pretty low. Have you seen drugs this skewed on a large claim thing?
Historically, we've seen that with you guys. You had a couple of people that had large drug utilization. This Crohn's disease is pretty much all medication.
What kind of formulary is the group on? Is it an open one? Is it pretty? So a lot of brand usage then?
Not a lot, but we can get into that. What next court or the next report will have the full year InfoLock rundown and be able to speak specifically to the year-over-year results. Problem is those things run on an incurred basis, and I need another couple of months to get that report.
Yeah, I'll, I'll mark down a note to pull those reports to break up the specialty drug and just the overall drug utilization. So as Dave said, once we have that paid data through InfoLock, we'll be able to dig down into a little more granular detail, and we'll definitely include that in the next, the next meeting that we have. The year-to-day data is definitely the most meaningful, so we want to make sure we wait until we have that, that full 12 months. Okay. So moving on to this experience detail, this is, you know, the, the more granular data that backed up the previous slides that we looked at. This is looking at, again, your current policies. We have a sneak peek, sneak peek into that first month of 2025. July for the total group, starting with an accrual of 88.8%. There are no stop-loss reimbursements yet to year-to-date, which is a great thing. So that gross and net position represent the 88.8%. Again, just backing up that data, we just reviewed on the previous slide, overall, the policy year for this total group was at 108.2% and landed at the 105.7. So the overall deficit position was about $870,000. Looking at the town specific, I'm really going to focus here on just the July 2025, since the, you know, the new data on these slides. The town is looking, you know, very favorable in this first month with a loss ratio of 85.2%. Again, no stop-loss reimbursement, so this is the gross and net position. If we compare that to our, you know, prior policy first month, we're already starting off in a much better position, even with that seasonality, keeping in mind with the first quarter of the plan year. You know, we're already starting off in a much more favorable position in 2025. And then the Board of Education is running right on target again at that 97.7% year-to-date in July. When we compare that to July 2024 for the first month of the prior policy, again, we are starting off in a slightly less favorable position, but not of concern with our target loss ratio being 100%.
We're going to look into what's driving that first number. We don't really know yet, but we talked about seasonality last time. We would have expected that to be a little bit lower. Would have been happier if it was in the 80s. But it's, it's not indicative of anything yet. That's the problem with one, looking at one.
Okay, perfect. So now the last look at our detail for 2025, 2024, 2025 policy year is our large claimants. Again, we already reviewed this, but just looking at that more granular detail, we can see the diagnosis codes. We had four claimants that hit that 175. The top claimant, you know, heavy utilization on that drug claim, which is driving a lot of that, a lot of that claim cost. Similar on this claim at number two, we have almost equal spend between medical and, and drug claims for this high claimant. So overall, we have large claimants representing, again, 21.6% of that gross claim experience. The RX claims represent 51.4% of the large, uh, large loss, large claim cost, excuse me. So this is much higher than expected. As I, you know, previously mentioned, the expected range for this is between 20 and 30% of the total large claimant cost. So just something to keep an eye on as we get those InfoLock data with the specialty drug utilization will help to shine a little bit more light on, you know, the details surrounding that.
Just have a quick question on the stop-loss. So our fees are a million, right, this year? What'd they go to in the next year? Forget, I thought our renewal is up a lot, right?
Yep, so our total stop-loss premium in 2024 was just over $1 million.
Right.
Now it's about $100,000, so expect that to raise to about 1.2 million.
120, about.
120?
One point. It's.
1.2?
102 a month. So about 120, I mean, 1.2 million.
Okay. And yet, and yet, we only got reimbursed 387,000, right?
This year.
Yeah, this year. We've had other years that are a lot higher.
You've had years where you've won, you've had years where you've won significantly, you've had years.
Where we've lost.
A whole lot of premium, and you got enough, almost nothing back.
Yep. Okay.
The purpose of stop-loss is not to cover really the $300,000 claim.
I know.
Although that's nice.
Yeah.
It's the $3 million claim that, that you're paying the money for. And we're seeing more and more and more claims that are three, four, five million dollars. It's, it's crazy. When I first started, there were never claims over a million. When ACA came in and eliminated the million-dollar cap and lifetime maximums, and over the last 10 years, we've seen stop-loss or individual claims significantly in the millions.
Good.
You guys are using.
Then every.
It's a Blue Cross plan, so probably not a lot of, lot of network utilization, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not really seeing much impact on this plan, like no surprises act or the independent dispute resolution.
No.
That, that's a couple of groups that I work with, it's been almost four points on the trends here.
Yeah. Now, you've got at least, I, I, I'm doing this from memory, but somewhere 96, 97% network utilization. And the ones that aren't, a lot of it is low-cost pharmacy, I mean, low-cost mental health and physical therapy, things like that, that we were talking about that earlier, physical therapy, chiropractic care, stuff that.
Not the plastics or.
It's, no. We're not covering that anyway, so.
Well, I mean, this is different groups that I work with in New York, New Jersey, and they've got, you know, for breast reconstruction after a mastectomy, out of network guy, and they're getting paid, the assistant is getting paid, you know, 150, 200% of Medicare, which isn't enough, then they bill it was 400 times Medicare, and they're getting that in the arbitration.
Well, you're in a tough area if you're doing New York, New Jersey, and Fairfield County. Because there's a significant number of providers in the area that refuse to join any network. High-end pediatrics, a lot of cancer docs. They'll take your insurance, but then they want to be able to balance bill you whatever the, the balance is. But that's knock wood, it hasn't really been a problem in the Hartford area. It's mostly high, like Boston, New York, New Jersey, parts of Fairfield County, if people are going into the city for things.
Dave, have you seen any increase in transplants? So I've heard there's like, I talked to transplant nurse like two weeks ago, and she says there's so many organs around.
I have.
Okay, but we, we probably don't see too many of those anyways, right?
No, they're very, it's a small number, a small percentage. I'm not saying you're not going to see one.
Yeah.
I mean, we've seen some end-stage renal.
Right.
Over the years. So those obviously would be there.
Yep.
Um, I just, not yours, but I just saw a report on another client today that's got a potential liver transplant. But those are, believe it or not, those aren't really that high cost anymore. The, the bigger problem is specialty drugs.
Yeah, right.
They, they cost significant, you know, if you get into a really high, I mean, it's a million dollars a year just for the drug. So they're miracles. But they cost a lot of money.
Alleged miracles, yeah.
Oftentimes developed with public dollars.
Well, some of the gene therapies can help. Hemophilia acts pretty strongly for about 10 years, and, but it's 3.2 for.
I was gonna say, it's about 4 million a year.
Well, no, it's a, it's a 3-2 setup, and then it lasts, it decreases about 10 points per year before they're back on it again. So then, you know, you kind of save the like a half million a year for a hemophilia act to get treated.
It's actually closer to a million.
Really?
At least what we're seeing in stop-loss numbers. It's about a million a year for a hemophilia act. There are other drugs now. I'm looking at one, it's 3 million a year. This person has a lot of things. It's actually an off-label use of a preferred drug that's working. It's great for the person.
Yeah.
It's terrible for the plan. Really, like I said, next time, we'll pull in the full calendar year info-lax, we can talk about that a little bit more. And we'll have like four or five months of current data, so we'll have a better sense of where we really are for this year. Anything else? Guys want to see?
I may. Why, sir, everybody looking at me all the time?
I like to see drug prices go down, but. Yeah, nothing you could do about it.
I, I would love it to, it's also to go down. Unfortunately, it don't seem to be going that direction.
Yeah, appreciate you coming, guys.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Terry.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Drive safe.
Multiple ones backwards. Also, we have.
We killed. He said we just about it.
Not bad, though.
My sister works in script on TV shows.
I get this back to you when I'm not sure. Are recycling?
All righty, all right. Next up on our docket is UBS. So I'll open the floor to you guys.
Okay. Thank you for having us. I apologize, I was supposed to be there in person. Had a family issue, so I'm not, but instead I brought along two other Mark Shigaskis. One is Craig Liederman, who's smiling right now. Who sits on the fixed income floor. We've been partners in our group for 30 years. Then to the right is Ryan Iannuzzo. He's one of the wizards behind all the numbers that are in here. We thought we'd introduce you to him also. So I'm not there, and of course, we have David and Ashley, who most of you know have been with us for like almost two decades or a little bit less for the other person. So it's a multi-generational. They thought we'd take the opportunity to introduce some of the people we've not seen before. I want to thank the, this committee for having us come in and do the presentations, a lot of material, because there were some questions asked. The last time, it's not going to take that long to go through it all, but we do want to do a market overview, go over the capital markets assumptions, which were changed since the last meeting. A quick overview of the asset allocation, which has the only implication it has now is an adjustment to the investment policy statement in one action item. Craig, as you can see, still sitting in his desk, he's on the trading desk for fixed income. He covers major banks and insurance companies, so we thought his perspective in a market where we're living news and dog ears right now might be important, because he's literally live on what's going on on the floors. And again, we've been partners for over 30 years in this group, so. Craig, why don't you start? Well, actually, I'll start it off by saying, I've been doing this for four, a little over four decades. And this is one of the few times I can say that, even though we're having all this volatility in the market, the technology or the AI is driving a lot of what's going on. Earnings are keep increasing, we think they're going to keep increasing. It's a bifurcated market, meaning if you look at the chip companies, you have Nvidia against AMD versus now Intel and some other makers like Huawei who are making chips. So there's a lot of competition. And there's also fixed income, which you can still get a 5% or 6% return on a decent portfolio before rates start to move down. It's also the first time, or one of the few times that I've been in these markets where you can make money in the public markets, meaning the stock market, the bond market, in the private markets, in the private equity, private credit for the time being. You can also make it in cryptocurrency, if you're willing to play that volatility and actually understand it, and also in gold. So it's an unusual time right now in the markets, but we'll let Craig give a prognostication on where our firm thinks we're going, but more importantly, the things he's hearing from the people he's working with. Craig?
Sure, really appreciate it. Thanks so much for the time. So, I mean, Mark, this sort of dovels into a call we just had. We just had a call with our, with our global head of trading, and he was speaking to the, to the impact of AI on markets, and certainly wanting to get into the Fed and rates and the economy, but just, just to reiterate what you're saying. He seems to think that there could be a lot more upside to, to these equity markets, and I know both JP Morgan and Morgan Stanley are out today saying the market is, you know, fully inflated and really can't go any higher. But what he was saying was just that he believes that due to the impact of AI, that a lot of corporate earnings are still way too low. That AI is going to provide a tailwind for the foreseeable future, and you're going to see corporate estimates just continue to get raised higher and higher. So, you know, it's not only about the Nvidia's of the world anymore. It's gonna, it's gonna help, you know, the whole AI wave is gonna help industrial companies and potentially all companies. So he just expects that the earnings estimates will continue to go up. Everybody's fixated on the fact that people say the market's too high and the PE ratios are too high. But he thinks that's going to be overcome by the fact that the, the E of the earnings are going to continue to go higher. So very interesting conversation just, just a couple hours ago. In terms of, just in terms of where we are in the economy and, and the markets, so the last Fed rate cut was back in December of last year. So the Fed's been on hold this entire year. Again, you know, President Trump has not been happy about that, but that's, that's the reality, that the Fed's been on hold. On Wednesday, the Fed will cut rates. It's not really a matter of if they will, and maybe they will, maybe they won't. The voting members of the Fed, almost all of them have already said that they will vote for its 25 basis point rate cut. There are some that are suggesting maybe it should be larger. The bond market right now, so not necessarily UBS's opinion, but the bond market is telling you that the Fed will cut this week, they'll cut 25, and then they will have consecutive cuts. They'll cut September, they'll cut October, and then they'll cut in December. There's about a 90% probability of that price then to the market right now. The Fed meets every six weeks, so it's the 17th of this month, and the 29th of October, and then the 10th of December. So the market is at a 90% probability of three consecutive rate cuts, and then from there, it's more 50/50. We do want to point out, though, that Federal Reserve Chairman Jerome Powell's term is up at the beginning of May, and it's very likely that once Powell is no longer chairman of, of the Fed, that, that the Fed resumes their easing campaign, even if they have a pause at some point early next year. So what we're seeing right now is just the, the, you know, obviously, earnings are strong, but if you take earnings out of the equation, the economy is certainly slowing. We're not saying it's headed into a recession. We're just saying you're going to see very slow growth. Possibly maybe due to immigration, but you're seeing almost no payroll growth in the economy. So the economy isn't really adding jobs anymore. It's pretty flat. There was a big revision to the jobs figure last week, which excited President Trump because he's been saying that a lot of these figures were inflated under the Biden, Biden administration. President Trump recently appointed a new head of the BLS, the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So I think, you know, there's, there is a bit of a concern, you know, that maybe the data, there's going to be pressure on people who are reporting the data. As an example, though, the most important economic data of the month is the monthly payroll data. And five minutes before the payroll data was released, Secretary Lutner came out and said, you know, the data is going to improve once we get our people in the, in the BLS. So that, that was a pretty concerning statement. But just, just in terms of, of everything that's going on right now, the Fed is more focused for the first time this year. They're focused more on unemployment than they are on inflation. You certainly see inflation continuing to tick up due to the tariffs. But, but the Fed's going to be more concerned that the economy isn't adding jobs, so we think that'll enable them to continue to ease. Mark, you want me to just stop there and then see if we can answer some questions, get a dialogue going?
I think that would be good, yeah. Any questions? Craig, you want to wrap it up? Would be good.
Yes, so overall, we see slow growth, healthy profit, profits. And most importantly, I think it's not only from the USA, but you're going to see supportive central banks globally continue to ease rates, And most importantly, I think it's not only from the USA, but you're going to see supportive central banks globally continue to ease rates. Which is going to be very helpful for, for our economy and the global economy and a nice tailwind.
You know, I'll just add, the only thing keeping up us up at night is geopolitics, and if the current administration. Was going to hold steady on tariffs or any of the other policies they've been implementing, putting on and off, so that's, that's the only concerning part. David, Ashley, Ryan, you want to add anything? Okay, let's get into the portfolio then. For the capital, yeah.
Okay, so I'll kick it off here, and again, you know. It's always tough when you're not in person, so if there's anybody, we need to stop to go over anything, please just speak up. Appreciate that, so as usual, we'll just quickly, high level. Start with the, excuse me, the police. So these numbers are September tenth, I'm on page fifteen. And the portfolio was seventy-nine million. And allocated sixty-two percent or so in stocks, the rest in bonds and cash. Next page shows the performance for the calendar year, not your fiscal year, but just calendar year. Through a couple days ago, through September tenth is ten, almost ten and a half percent, ten point four or five percent, so. Pretty remarkable, considering the year that we've had so far. You know, portfolios, this is a reminder, the S and P was down double digits, down almost fifteen percent. In April, and now you have balanced portfolios with stocks and bonds that are up. Double digits at this point, so certainly a good thing to see. And then, yeah, I guess Ryan, just to, this will be relevant for later, page seventeen. Shows you the broad high-level targets. Versus the investment policy index. Or targets, and so, you know, really what we've had is an overweight to equities specifically. Mostly in the US, but we also do have a slight overweight to international as well. And when I say overweight, I'm just referring to the target that's in the policy, so. Again, that's been driving the performance and it continues to do so. Ashley, do you want to, I could turn it over to you for just dealing, digging into the individual manager, manager performance as of, as of the end of June.
Yeah, happy to do that, David, and I think the best page for this, because it's a summary, is page nineteen. If you scroll to page nineteen and. I'll just point out that all of the plans are effectively invested the same way. At times, the OPEB and the admin plans will have a little bit more cash on hand, mainly the OPEB, but. By and large, the target allocations are the same for all of the different plans, so the returns are fairly similar. But if we look, the manager lineup is broken down by different categories, so you see large cap, we're at the top. Left-hand side, those are managers that are focused on the US. Market, maybe mainly established companies. We have three sets of managers, one is an active manager by the name of MFS Value. So they will own a lot of blue chip types of companies, tend to tilt a little bit more towards the less expensive names. Then the other two managers we have are the S and P five hundred index. Typically, when people reference the market, they reference the S and P, so this is an index fund that tracks the broader. Large-cap US market, and then the third manager is Vanguard Growth, so this is a. Another passive index, but it's more focused on the growth areas of the market, which tend to provide more representation with. Companies in the technology sector, communication services sector, consumer discretionary sector. So you tend to get less income through dividends, there are more growth in earnings. And so what you could see here is for the three-month period ended June. All the managers were positive, however, the real strength in the market was the growth part of the large-cap market. As the Vanguard Growth was up eighteen percent for the quarter, so, you know, as we started the year. The market really took it on the chin as we got into early April, and the area of the market that struggled the most. Was a lot of the growth parts of the market, so, you know, when you think typically of the magnificent seven names. That are often quoted, they took a big hit early in the year, but from that point. Have bounced back dramatically, and they've been really up until recently, along with the international markets, the strength of the overall market. But if we look year-to-date, those three managers, the MFS Value is up seven point four percent through June. Which is better than its benchmark return of six percent. And then the Vanguard five hundred and the Vanguard Growth effectively are tracking their respective indexes minus the fees associated with them. On the small-cap side, we have one dedicated manager, this is a manager by the name of Kane Anderson. This is what we would call a very active manager in the small-cap space, meaning they don't own three hundred stocks. Generally speaking, they tend to own about fifty to sixty stocks overall in their portfolio, and so they will deviate. Over time relative to the Russell two thousand index. And, you know, what we found is we like to have active management in the small-cap space because a lot of those companies are not. Actively followed the way they are in the large-cap space, and so a manager like Kane. We believe really could add some value in terms of stock picking. And so you see calendar year-to-date through June, they were negative, pretty much in line with the index, but if you look longer term since inception. That manager has done very well versus the index, and by quite a bit relative to the Russell two thousand. Since inception, they're up fourteen point four nine percent versus the index return of six point four. So slight underperformance year-to-date, but longer term, they've really added some value. And then if we look at the international side of the portfolio, we have two dedicated managers. Again, one is an active manager by the name of MFS International Value. And then we have an index manager by the name of Vanguard Total International Stock Index. So the MFS International Value is going to focus again on a lot of dividend payers. They will generally have most of their exposure to the developed markets, so think of Canada. Europe, Japan, Australia, that's the majority of their exposure, but they'll also have modest exposure to emerging markets. The Vanguard, on the other hand, is going to give you broader exposure to developed and developing markets, so in that index, you tend to get about thirty percent. Exposure to emerging markets, as you can see, year-to-date, both have done extremely well on an absolute basis. MFS is up nineteen point six percent through June, and the Vanguard Total International Stock Index was up eighteen percent. Through June, and the real reason for the strong performance, first off, I think. Markets are starting to recognize that the valuations in the non-US markets are a lot less demanding than they are in the domestic market, and so we've seen. Real strength in those markets, you know, from bargain hunters. Effectively, but also year-to-date, we've seen some significant weakening of the dollar relative to a number of other currencies, so I think the combination of those two. Is the reason why twenty twenty-five is one of the first years in a while we're seeing sustained outperformance by the non-US equity markets. But they were the real leaders in the portfolio, and then finally, if we focus on the bond managers that we have. We have three bond managers, the DCM Core Plus, which is going to be more of a traditional. Type of bond manager, meaning that they have an average investment grade quality in the portfolio, but they can go a little bit below investment grade. They also tend to have a duration that's roughly equal to what the Barclays aggregate is, which is a little bit over six years. So they're going to look more like the traditional taxable bond market. They're your biggest individual allocation on the fixed income side. And then we have two other managers, which we would consider to be a little bit more opportunistic. Have a little bit more flexibility in terms of the types of sector exposures they have in the fixed income world. As well as the duration that they're willing to take on. So the BlackRock Strategic Income for the last few years has actually had a very low average maturity or very low duration. Over the last year, they've actually started to extend duration. In anticipation that, you know, rates are going to come down, and so they wanted to lock in some higher, longer-term rates. So the duration of the BlackRock is going to be somewhere around four to four and a half years currently. And they've actually added some pretty good value relative to the benchmark over time. Both the DCM portfolio and the BlackRock portfolio are pretty close to what the. US bond market has returned year-to-date, the third manager you have is JP Morgan Strategic Income. Like the BlackRock, they have a lot of flexibility in terms of their exposures and duration. What I would say though is today, they still are well below the average duration of the US bond market, so the average duration, they're. Probably under one year today, and so that's been a little bit of a headwind as of late, as rates have come down. So, longer term though, they've actually added value relative to the benchmark, and they certainly held up very well in twenty twenty-two, which was a very difficult. Period for most traditional bond managers. So, what does that look like overall? If we look at quarter returns, it was a very good quarter. With the, through June, the portfolio was up six point nine two percent for the quarter. And calendar year-to-date through June, it was up six point four seven percent. Calendar year-to-date, and, and you could see the last twelve months, the portfolio has returned eleven point six five percent, and on average over the last three years. Twelve point three three percent per year, so very, very good return over the last three years. And even the last five years, if you look at your actuarial number, the returns of, of this plan, which is similar to the others, has been above what the. Assume rate of return has been, so we've had some really good years. Twenty twenty-two notwithstanding, but despite that, I think the average over that period has been really strong. So any questions on anything that I just reviewed in terms of the managers or asset allocation or composite performance?
Just have a quick one on international equity. That's not, you, you said a lot of it was because of the devaluation of the dollar, I thought. Some of that was currency hedged, though, it's not.
I believe, David, correct me if I'm wrong, MFS can do some hedging, but that's not a big part of their strategy?
No, the, the, these are not currency hedged, it's possible, John, we used to have. A, a, a bond international manager that did some currency hedging, but these, these investments are not currency hedge.
Okay, so that's why they've done so well, because the dollars we can buy ten points, so that's half their game.
Correct.
New year, and the, and the six months, okay, thanks.
The other thing we should point out is the one-year number on here is the fiscal year number, it's June thirtieth number. Eleven point six five, so we're well above the six and a quarter, I believe, actuarial assumption. And also I'll point out for the newer members on the committee, it says since inception is the last line. That's actually back to nineteen ninety-eight, when we took over the plan, we went back tonight, all the way back to nineteen ninety-eight. Ordered the returns, and so we have those returns historically for the town in here also. But they, that's below the actual assumed rate at this point, but we weren't the people on the account at that point.
Yeah, if you go to page twenty-one, that, that shows the ten, the ten-year number. Which is, excludes the financial crisis, so. If you think, you know, I mean, it's a long period, ten years, but you know, it's, it's a period of. Of a nice bull market as well, with a few bumps along the way, but, but the inception number obviously has a lot of the ups and downs.
Yeah, I had, I had a question on this exhibit, I think it's probably more for Janet than you guys, so. I look at the top of the page, it says net contributions. One-year net contributions, twenty-one. One-year net contribution showing like eight hundred, almost nine hundred thousand, because we. The benefits coming out are more than we put in, but then the three-year ones. Like three point eight million, so that means. Our benefits were two point nine million more. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
So if you look, just look up at the top, net contributions going across, okay. So one, one year, and that, that typically tends what we do, one year we're. Per year, we're like nine hundred thousand less in contribution than benefits, but then it was. Was a lot bigger in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, well, did, did we do something where we didn't, didn't we cut back on the contribution we were making a little bit? Well, I know, but.
The last three years, we put in three hundred thousand extra.
Yeah, but I, okay, I thought we had done something where we changed amortization period for the police in those, one of those years. I'll look it up, I'll, I'll answer my own question, I get a chance to look at it.
The actual number, we've always.
Yeah, I know, but yeah, but I think we may have.
I'm not sure.
I think we moved on to Amherst.
I don't know what makes up a net contribution.
Okay. Well, net contributions, what we put in less the benefits.
And yeah, that's going to be, but does it include, well, yeah, then you've got the investment.
Income separate, yeah, so yeah, so that's just, that, that's just pure contributions that we put in less benefits.
Yes, I think every month for the police, this is especially for the police, every month our benefits have gone up.
Oh, yeah.
We had that one time when we had five.
Hippo retire, yeah.
And that's going to, to skew your number.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that in every month, we have about four hundred thousand dollars of our benefits being paid out.
Right, we're putting in about three million a year for everybody, yeah. Okay, I'll just take a look at the place, see what's trending, I'm trying, I just saw it this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to look at it. Okay, thanks.
So we can move on and maybe just high level, because as Ashley mentioned, all of the pensions and any of have the same. Underlying structure, so for the municipal plan. The return is ten point four four, and then if you just go to page, you know, twenty-eight, thank you, Ryan. The fiscal, oh, okay, here we go, so yeah, so this is going to the. The admin, so ten point two, you know, cash flows are different for each of the plans. And then the allocation is different for the OPEB, so just as a quick reminder, if we go to page forty-two for the OPEB. Ryan, just go one back, I'll just, I'll touch on the allocation, there you go. So yeah, this one is, so just a reminder, what we have, think of it like there's a long-term portfolio, that long-term portfolio, it. Looks more like the pension allocation, and then there's a short-term portion, when, when the annual contribution comes in in July. At this point, this portfolio has gotten mature enough where we put hundred percent of that annual contribution. Into the shorter-term, more conservative bond funds, because then there's claims that come in quarterly, and we pay those out. And if there's any leftover, and that leftover, you know, each year kind of gets trued up and, and rebalanced into the long-term portion, so. Since we're closer to the beginning of your fiscal year. That, that, those monies went into the bond allocation, and which is why on this plan, the bond allocation is closer to forty percent. And then the return for the calendar year, here is nine point seven five. The OPEB's fiscal year to, year, year, excuse me, year of rate of return is on page forty-six. And that's ten point nine two. Any questions on the, you know, the portfolio or the returns? We don't have any portfolio recommendations today. We did, we did want to shift and talk a little bit about an asset allocation study, but before we move on, just want to make sure we covered everything. Okay, great. So I'm, I'm going to quickly kick it off, and then Ryan can go through the details here. We, periodically, we do what's called an asset allocation study. And an asset allocation is the mix of investments, stocks and bonds. At a very high level, we're not talking about individual managers or investments, it's just a future prediction. Of what we think certain mixes of investments will return. It's forward-looking, right, so we know what happened in the past, what's going to happen in the future. And UBS will periodically update these assumptions going forward when, when the environment changes, so it's not done every year. It's every, usually every few years, or it depends, it depends if there's a drastic change in the markets. So, in the second quarter, there was an update to the capital market assumption, so we figured we would. Use it as an opportunity just to revisit this, and so what we set up was to show you the current investment policy target. Versus one alternative, just for the purposes of discussion. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave it, leave it to Ryan to, to take us through this.
David, before we go through that, let's go through. David, before we go through that, let's go through our capital markets assumptions are in two pieces. So when your actuary comes in, they're doing the, their capital markets assumptions, they'll call us, they have their own. And they're looking thirty, thirty-plus years out for the, uh, average rate of return. We have two different assumptions that we started with about seven or eight years ago. We have the equilibrium assumption, which is what the actuaries normally use, which is our thirty-year assumption, but more importantly. Correct me if I'm wrong, David, these are strategic assumptions. And we, our investment committee globally decided that there's too many things changing in the world. That we need an event, uh, investment assumption that's le- less duration. So that's a business cycle, let's say five to seven years time period. And that gets adjusted more frequently. So you'll see our asset allocation will change more dramatically. On the shorter end than on the long end, and these are based on that one business cycle, correct, David?
That's right, yeah.
All right, so Ryan, if you wanna run through it real quickly.
Yeah, so if we look at the left-hand side of the page, uh, we're looking at the target. I, investment policy statement. And what the actuarial returns look like. So just a quick review. This is the investment policy statement and the targets. So, uh, if we start at the top. It's sixty, forty, sixty stocks, forty bonds. And again, on the left-hand side of the page, you can see if we go back ten years. This type of, this type of portfolio with those assumptions returned about nine percent. But forward-looking, it would return based off those assumptions about six point two percent. Again, going back to the investment policy statement. We looked at the left side, what we're proposing is. Adding a little bit more risk in terms of adding five percent more to stocks. Taking that from bonds. Specifically, taking from international fixed income. Within the policy, there's a five percent allocation, target allocation to international fixed income. So the proposal based off of the capital market assumptions is taking on a little bit more risk. Which we think is measured and we'll get into that a little bit more. So instead of it, the current state being sixty, forty. We would, we're proposing to change the investment policy statement to sixty-five, thirty-five stocks and bonds. That's now, that's not a change in how the portfolio is invested right now. It's just a change in. The investment policy statement. Again, just another reminder, we go back to the allocation of the portfolio. It's about sixty, forty right now. So why are we recommending that change? Uh, if we highlight the sharp ratio on the bottom right here, which is highlighted. Sharp ratio measures the amount of risk and return. So. We're in line, taking the same amount of risk and looking forward. Again, the actuarial assumption is six point two five percent. Right now, forward-looking at six point one nine percent with the current allocation, but with this slight adjustment. We would pick up an additional fifteen basis points moving forward. In terms of, uh, projected return.
I just wanna jump in here just to, to reiterate something that Ryan said. We're not recommending a portfolio change because the portfolio actually already is closer to. The sixty-five, the right-hand side than what's in the investment policy. So, um, you know, normally we would, you know, keep it a policy target. In place and move the portfolio around that target based off what we thought was happening in the market. Uh, but in this case, when we run the study. Moving the long-term target closer to sixty-five, thirty-five. At least with the strategic assumptions we're talking about. You know, brings us closer or just above the six and a quarter actual rate of return. So. No portfolio recommendation. This is really more about an investment policy, um, update.
Now, is the sixty-five percent equity in, um, the range of our investment policy now? Investment statement, okay.
Yeah.
We're getting to the upper end of it, John, but yes, it's for the, the minimum.
Okay, and then any, any reason that currently we're at like sixteen and a half percent international equity? Are your institutional investors without non-traditional assets is showing at between. Seventeen percent of moderate to twenty-four percent of mono- moderately aggressive? Is there any reason why we're keeping that lower? Or are we gonna keep that lower? Or are you gonna tell us that next quarter?
Yeah, John, John, that's, that's, um, so. You're referring to the, uh, the, the, the longer report by UBS about capital market assumptions and allocations.
Yeah, the four-page one. It's a strategic asset allocations.
Yeah, so, um, for, for a while, UBS is sort of. Generally, H- H- WBS has favored. I shouldn't say favorite, but ha- recommended a higher allocation. Than we had to international than we had been recommending clients for various reasons. So usually what we do is we, we, we look to, um. You know, the, the, those resources for guidance, but then. Adjust accordingly based off of either who, the, the client or our view of the world. So. Well, we, we prefer a lower target international, which has helped. Right? Because international hasn't done well, but allow flexibility within the range of the policy to increase. So right now you could go up to twenty-five percent. When, when we redo the policy, we could certainly increase the range, but. Right now, we're not recommending large increases in the targets to international.
I just had a question too. There's a risk profile questionnaire. Is that filled out by the town? In this allocation report, asset allocation details?
Uh, that, uh, no, I mean, yes, yes, when we, when we have these discussions from previous, you know. Uh, our understanding of kind of what's, what's. You know, what the committee has, has. Uh, uh, agreed upon over the years. So we pre-fill a base of our, our understanding and all that does, it's, it's essentially, uh, you know. It's the compliance, making sure that we're, um, our recommendation is within reason. If the risk tolerance questionnaire was. You know, super conservative, then we wouldn't be able to show you a sixty-five, thirty-five portfolio.
Yep, okay.
And that's in line with the investment policy statement as well.
I have to read that again. I haven't looked at it in a while.
John, if you have any questions before the next meeting, send them along and we'll get answers at the, have everybody get the same answers at the next meeting. Okay?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good for the most part. I just.
Okay.
I, I didn't know who did this. I didn't know if this was the town that did this or, so this is you pre-filling it?
Yeah. Okay.
From our meeting notes over the years, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. So, um, I mean, that, that's essentially, this could be an action, our, our thought was. The last time the investment policy statement was, uh, updated was two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we always go back, even if there's no changes and we'd like to review it. So our proposal is at the next meeting. We would, you know, formally do a, a run-through of the IPS, but part of that would be. A potentially updating the targets. We thought that having the discussion around. This, this allocation study was, was, um, the first step in a potential update to the investment policy.
Yep.
So I guess what we're looking for is a, uh, motion, I guess, to approve the change in the target. If that's okay. And then after that, the next meeting, we, uh, bring up a full discussion and review of the investment policy statement. Which our suggestions will go out at least a week to ten days before the meeting, so you have time to review it.
Can we take action on new business like that?
Yeah, so, alright, then, yeah, I'll entertain the motion to accept our changes.
Second, that's fine.
Alright, all those in favor?
Bye. Hi, hi, with the caveat that we don't have, and our ordinance, we don't have anything in there about voting on pension investments.
Alright, alright. Not opposed, so we should be good to go for next meeting there.
Okay.
Perfect, thanks, guys.
And again, I apologize for not being there. I'm glad the books got there, Janet. I didn't, wasn't sure if they got there or not, so I'm glad they got there, cause I was supposed to hand-bring them, so, good.
At here, a little before four thirty, you're good.
Okay, good, thank you. I see them there, so I'm happy. I was worried. Thanks. Okay. Okay, everybody, if you have any questions with all the volatility, please give us a call and we'll be glad to talk through with anybody what's going on. If you want us to, you know, share what we're thinking on a particular day, please give us a call. It's a lot of news going on. Okay?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good night. Okay, take care.
Alrighty, good stuff, good stuff. Alright, moving on, we have remarks by counselors. Any remarks, guys?
Good, I just had a question for Janet. Uh, has that ordinance moved anywhere?
I'm not in charge of that ordinance.
Okay.
I talked to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't heard.
I, I handed it off way back when to the attorney and the town manager and that's.
Well, we have, we've had a couple of town managers since then, right?
Was that, is that before Jonathan's?
That was, that was before Jonathan, that was Tom Hockes.
Okay.
That one, and I would talk to Tim Mahi and Mitch Page, cause they were your representatives for the council.
I will, I will, I'll reach out to Jonathan tonight when you add a note here.
I don't know that Jonathan's ever got.
Yeah, he might not, but I'll put it on his radar, so at least that could.
Last time I heard it, it was Tom Hockes' hand. And I know that at the time, um, attorney and attorney was, I sent it over to attorney and.
Yeah, okay.
And now we have new attorney, so yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Yeah, I know, I hear you.
I'll, I'll send a message later, we're on top of that.
Cause we voted to send it to.
To council.
Council.
And I have yet to see it at a dinner set.
How long ago was that? Have been years.
Couple of years.
Yeah, hundreds of years.
Cause, um, when we think, um. Jonathan's been here for a year.
Yeah.
I have no idea what you're talking about. No, no, I just mean the.
How much it was before that, so it's been almost a year.
Yeah, I, I started it ten years ago. There's always never that. There, we have an ordinance for this committee. And it has, it says, it talks about employee insurance and what we do, what our functions are. There's nothing in pensions at all, not a word. Cause when I first got on this committee in two thousand and thirteen, my company came back and asked me, it's like. This is the same as a standing insurance committee. What are you talking about? You know, voting on investments? It's like, doesn't say that in here. It's like, well, that's what they do. So I just wanna make sure we're covered for what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, I can definitely get on there. Uh, next, next meeting. Do you have like a specific day in mind, Janet? Do you wanna wait till after the election, maybe pick a day? Right, yeah.
Usually it's quarters, so we're in September, so. It's tough to find five. Time to get five people.
Yeah, what's the deal?
Yeah, well, appreciate everybody coming tonight. Anything else, guys, before we wrap this up?
Not to take any more time, but maybe Billy, uh, could answer my question. Um. I'm a bit concerned about the, the loss ratios on the health insurance, specifically the. You know, the RX, um, is there anything we can do? And weren't we, when we were interviewing these. Companies, didn't they talk about maybe looking at plans where we could lower some of these costs? I know it was primarily the Crohn's disease. And all that. Bill, Bill, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the only, the thing I always hear when I used to work with the, with the public sector. Is, you know, you're a little handcuffed by the, the contracts that you have, and I don't think, if I remember, you guys don't have prior authorization of drugs. Which is. Uh, that, that's, I mean, I've been guessing a lot of that, especially the, the high-cost specialties are really branded drugs, which there may not be generic alternatives. But unless you can get the, you know, the covered population, if they've got a collective bargain vote. To, to agree, you know, you may be just banging your head against the wall or. Like bargain goes, it'll be a concession on something else, which might be worth it. Yeah, I was blown away by seeing the. Split there on the drug and the, and the medical, um, like the drug actually being more than.
It's crazy, yeah.
That, that, that is, I'd never see that, but I've also, you know, we're also pretty fortunate that you're not seeing seven-figure claims. That, that, it's common, there, somebody's gonna get really impacted, somebody's gonna have a premature baby, that's, that's a really rough story. But, um, yeah, I, I, I agree, the loss ratio is troubling and.
So do we?
Probably.
So given your, your, your statements, should we, is there something we should be doing regarding our coverage or stop loss? I, I don't know, it's, it's, you know, it's a bit out of my realm, but I understand loss ratios and it doesn't look good.
Stop loss, I don't know, I mean, I get the winning and losing, but I never looked at stop loss like that, cause if you win, then you get smacked in the teeth with an increase, so. I don't know that that's, you know, necessarily winning or losing, um. With, it's about benefit design. It's about, you know. Care management and, and cost management for the drugs that are out there, whether it's a form, a more restrictive formulary, which. Again, that would be a, probably a non-starter in bargaining and then other kind of methods to. Make sure that the right drugs, the right mix is, you know, provided to. The members and that's more bargain stuff. I mean, the prior office blows my mind that that's not out there, but I, I get the noise that it creates. We all, we've all probably gone through that when you get some kind of funky drug.
And we do, we do this, the contract negotiation. They go through it and see what is in the realm and drug being.
Yeah, some other things.
This is where I go to Lockton and say, hey, what do you guys see for cross containment? This is an obvious issue. It's getting raised and, you know, throw somebody. Now, Lockton is, they're not bound to just stay neutral like Switzerland. They can give recommendations.
They are, they are, are.
Okay, so yeah, they should be coming.
And that's, that's what they do. They do go through the whole thing. I don't think we've had too much, uh, as you said, for us.
I mean, they, they can sit there and say, oh, you know, never go through or anything, but you at least have to hear them and understand what they are and then bring those to. The people that are doing the negotiating, see what you want and, you know, what hill you wanna die on.
They do, they do that. We, we have them involved in the negotiation.
So have they brought anything yet?
I don't remember the last time that we had anything too great for what we weren't. We didn't, now we, we see these rise, we're gonna ask, maybe that's for us.
The gentleman meant about getting the latest reports, though? He doesn't have the detail?
Yeah, it sounds like they'll have some, a, a good output report that.
We need to incur.
Whatever that name of that, well, that'll tell you where they're being used. Hopefully it'll give some indication of what the meds are. You know, but if, if you don't change how they can be utilized and accessed, you're probably not gonna put a big dent in stuff.
And I'm not sure about the, I mean, we know some of our bigger ones. I'm not sure that we can do anything about a couple of them. I mean, we're small, the town side is a small pop and you got a couple of those and.
Now, Bill, does preventative, any preventative measures help at all? You know, cause for a while there was the big thing with the state. They had to get a physical every year and.
We do have a wellness plan.
Oh, you do?
We will say that we did try to implement it where. We were just offering it and we got huge pushback.
Yeah.
From the union, about including.
Well, then you, people get worried about privacy and, yeah.
Yeah.
That was the issue, so.
Um, do they work? And you can run into, in theory, long, long.
Term, they do, yeah.
But short-term.
They pick up stuff that she would always say.
Things, you know, you're gonna be on more trucks, and so.
Right.
Work, yes, for the health, but is, if your population is generally. Every year when it changes, your population's a year older, so that you're, you know, a year sicker. I don't, I don't think you guys have gotten much younger, maybe at the police level.
Now, the retirement numbers are inherent to.
These are your retirees too.
Yeah.
And, um, we don't have a lot of health benefits that we, because of the D A, that we offer to retirees.
It's, you know.
So as a committee, as, as a committee, should we be, you know, drafting our concerns? You know, to the negotiators of the various. You know, to the negotiators of the various contracts throughout the town and say, this is a concern and we need to, you know, we need, we need to. You know, take a, a closer look at this and, and, um, this should be on the table.
Dave, Jen and I both said it on those. So you just, you just said it to two members that sit on this negotiation.
They, they're aware of the increasing cost because that will.
Okay.
And to be honest, we haven't been doing any negotiations since we started seeing this, but. We will be coming in to the, um, the next contract renegotiation.
And they'll have all those figures, Janet?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
They do a full analysis of the policy.
You know, that goes both ways. I mean, if you're gonna have to hold healthcare. You know, fixed or steady. I mean, one would argue that would be less of a pay increase.
We've, we've been doing the cost share. Doing cost share increases to try to offset.
You're still probably with eighty five fifteen, I gotta guess. Something like that.
We were lower than that on some of these.
No, I mean, as far as like with the cost, with the, oh, you mean it's like ninety ten or?
It was for a bit. You just, that's just, that was one of the things against last contract. Police, police are actually one of the highest. Yeah.
Really?
Did I just hear ninety ten?
No.
Are you getting any pushback about the high deductible plans still after five years? No, everybody's okay with it? Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, well, if there's nothing less, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Alright. Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright, thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.